With the chief on getting the exact, but I, I think that it will just be a matter of time when we are able to get that.
There's nobody there. It's not like somebody's, you know, upset with us or anything. It's just a matter of finding them.
Correct.
They're not even using their water probably. So if we can't.
Can you read their meter? We can, we still have the ability to read the meter they have currently. Are they using water?
No, my understanding is that the two vacant homes are, they're turned off at the curb and that's it. It's, it's about gaining access to the building. And so you just wait it out. When, uh, you know, when the home changes hands, that's the most likely outcome. When home goes vacant for three, six, nine months, eventually it goes into foreclosure or the prior owner who has left it will sell it. And that'd be the moment then when we'd, we'd, we'd be able to gain access and, and change it out.
I don't want to.
Those, those two I would be, I'm not particularly worried about getting those two done. It'll happen. It just takes some time.
One thing I want to bring up, and I don't want to change the subject, but foreclosed properties, what are we doing with the sewer and water bills that were left by the previous owners when the property was foreclosed upon?
Sewer water bills, um, stay with the parcel.
Okay. I still think we need to address that because there's, you know, new people that buy property move in there. They're not knowingly know that there's an outstanding water and sewer bill and it could be thousands of dollars.
But like you said last week or two weeks ago with the HOA stuff, you, when you sign something, you should know.
But where the house is foreclosed on is a different thing, Luke. Somebody that owned the house walked away owing that money.
Same thing happens with HOA developments.
Jesus Christ.
So I mean, I get what you're, I, I totally agree with you.
Never mind. I'm sorry I brought it up because you're, you're, you're twisting the page on this. An HOA is a completely different thing. It's not a foreclosed property. A foreclosed property is something that somebody previously lived in, didn't pay the bill and walked away from it. Now, when you're referring to the other one with no curb stops to each house, that is completely an opposite what I'm talking about. Has nothing to do with that. I'm talking about a foreclosed property.
How are we currently handling that?
The, the new owner stays with the parcel. So the new owner is supposed to pay it. I don't disagree. I think the real estate agent should be taking care of that or the bank should be. But there's nothing in form to stop that from happening again.
The homeowner is going to have to be intelligent enough to know that if he's buying a foreclosed property, they're, and especially within a city, because they know they're going to have to pay city sewer and water, they best check with the city to see how much is owed on it before they decide to make an offer in a house.
That's where it comes down.
That's the way I look at it. If you're smart enough to buy a house, you better be smart enough to know that.
It's the same thing with having to know the HOA rules.
So I'm okay with it, the way it is.
See, you guys are flipping your arguments now because now you agree with Steve and now you agree with Luke.
No. No, because I always, I always thought that the, the resident that bought a house shouldn't face a burden that was there before.
Steve is saying the same thing as you are saying. You guys are playing at different topics.
Yeah, but I'm saying last, two weeks ago, he told me not to flip my script on stuff and I'm still the same way. So if he's going to call me out two weeks ago on something, well, there it is right there too. So I, I think if, in that case, yes, I, I don't think it's fair for a new person to have to bear a burden from a previous owner. Just as the same thing as the HOA dropping the ball and new residents should not have to blame, face the burden of what happened to a previous owner. That's, that's my point.
I, I agree with you, Luke, but in this circumstance, they're buying a foreclosed property and when, when you buy foreclosed property, you, there's conditions. And by, you know, you're buying something with problems, most likely.
Sure. That's fair too.
In, in my experience, one of the primary duties of our utility billing clerk is to respond to title companies. Title companies send requests almost daily and sometimes it is partially overwhelming, the number that we get. Title companies will contact, contact us every time. They'll say, what is the outstanding, is there an outstanding utility bill? Is, what do you expect the final estimated bill to be? Are there any outstanding assessments? All of those things get taken care of. Ninety-nine point nine percent of the time when a home changes hands, regardless of whether it's foreclosed, whether it's a, a quick claim, whatever the scenario is, title company is charged with the responsibility to identify any of those costs. And almost certainly, not necessarily every time, but dang near every time, the seller is the one that is covering those ultimately. They are receiving a check for the sale of the home that is lower than it would have been because they are covering those costs. That is, I mean, that is really, really, really standard. And I, and I have even talked to one homeowner who said, holy cow, this bill didn't get taken care of. Um, how could that have been? I said, why don't you talk to your title company? Cause they should have actually contacted us. Sure enough, they called the title company and title company took care of it for them. Because they knew they should have found that and they should have rectified that at closing. That, that is the standard and that is really, really broad. Ninety-nine point nine percent of the time.
Well, in those houses, I don't think we have any other choice but to wait till there's a new owner in those houses and then, and then go forward from there.
Yeah. And I agree with that. The, the one that was, the one I wanted to chat a little bit more about and the reason I asked to put it on the agenda tonight was uh, the gentleman that was here at the committee of the whole. Uh, so we had had that whole conversation and Steve, you'd, you know, you, you know him. You'd offered to even go and install it yourself and um, he's never really followed up with that. He, he was basically still stuck on the issues that he had mentioned that night. Um, and uh, just is not, is not wanting to make that change. And so um, we do, there is some precedent for something like this. I mean, we, we did make, actually it was when, when Paul was on the council, I think it was, was something that he had asked for. Um, and uh, you know, there was one resident, I, I forget how long ago we had made the changes on the old, the meters we have now was like 2013, so 10 years ago. And we made a special exception for that resident at that time. Um, with this one here, the current meter that's in his house is operational right now. Um, and we can still read it right now. So I mean, we could let him continue to use that meter. Uh, and I, I was going to propose, I mean, the other option basically, I should cover that first, I guess. The other option would be say, we do an administrative warrant. You know, he goes in front of a judge as, as far, as how I understand what would happen, right? He goes in front of the judge. He would have to plead his case of why he did not want to change it. And then the judge would make a decision, which I mean, the judge, I mean, I would be amazed if he decided against, it's, it's city water. You, you have to abide by what the city, if they're selling you the water, that's, that's the deal, you know? So, so I mean, there's that option, but I really, we, we work for the residents, right? I really don't want to treat a resident like that if we don't have to. And so, I mean, I think it's, it would be a little bit more of a hassle to go this route. But I think it, it's, would probably be the right thing to do. Um, but, so he'd prefer to keep with his current meter. And like I said, right now it's working. We can still read it. Uh, and you know, what would happen most likely would be the battery is probably going to run out first. Um, and we did talk to Jim, uh, who's our, our, what is, what is Jim's title again? I can.
Utility manager.
Utility manager. I don't, how can I not remember that?
I'm not sure.
Utility managers, two words. Uh, but I always forget that. But, but Jim's been around a long time and uh, so that was, you know, the first thing that probably would run out would be that. And he said, we could keep extra meters around of the old meters, the old style, and we could change the batteries out if we had to. So I mean, we'd still have to be able to get access if we needed it to, to do that. You know, maintenance and repair. And uh, the next thing would be probably the radio on his meter could be an issue. And we could still keep those old meters around to replace that if we had to. Um, and then the last thing that would probably end up being an issue and would probably be kind of the final thing where we really are not going to be able to work with it anymore would be our software reading. Our, or the, the meter reading software on our laptop is Windows seven. And so that's not supported anymore, which is the main reason that we were making this change in the first place was they're not supporting in the software. So it's, it's going to become obsolete. But when that happens, then we'd actually have to go inside the residence and manually read the meter every month. And I highly doubt that he's going to want us to go in and read the meter every month, you know, and um, so I, I mean, I guess what I'm asking is, would you guys be okay making an exception and kind of going with that as our plan? Like I said, it's not ideal, but it's, I, and I know it will be a pain for the city staff, but we, we do work for the residents. And we want to make sure that we're treating them the way that we want to be treated. And if he's got a lot of concern about that situation, then I, I'm, I'm willing to, to allow for an exception for as long as possible. Um, when we can't make that exception anymore, then you know, we may have to move forward with, with the, the new meter. But um, but that would be my, my proposal is that we go that route instead of the administrative warrant and, and forcing the issue. I'd rather, I'd rather try to work with him.
I'll second what the mayor said.
If I could just add, add one thing, um, the precedence that we sent, set with the previous resident that we've been discussing back in 2013. He was also charged seventy-five dollars a month for that. Um, so we already have that within our billing software that that does get added. And that is for the extra having to go and read the meter maybe. And keep in mind, when we do send someone in, if we do, to do a manual read, if he permits a man, which I'd want council to take vote that we would be able to manually read if it came to that. We do send two public works employees in, not just one.
So I have, I have a question on these. Why, I mean, I know it's really a pain, but why are they in the house versus at the curb stop where you shut off the, I mean, shut off the.
Meters in the house.
What's that? I know the meter's in the house, but why can we not have it at the shut off point at the street?
Cause they will freeze in six feet down the ground.
Yeah, there are times that we have like an actual, like the radio is placed higher up. So in some like, if you had a deep basement, the radio can actually have a, like a tether cord and you can put the radio up higher to read it. If we can't read it from, like our old ones from the street, so to say, from the curb line, but it is so it doesn't freeze.
So there's a water, I mean, there's a water line. How, how deep are the water lines in the city? Depends on area? Six to eight feet?
Yeah.
So why can't, what I'm saying is why can't, instead of the meter being in the house, why can't it be at the curb stop where the water goes in? You know, it doesn't freeze there. If the water flows, it doesn't freeze. So why can't?
Cause you have to have access to the meter.
If you needed to get access to the meter, you'd have to dig down. Like if we have a problem in the curb stop leaks, we have to dig down.
So how do you shut off at the curb now?
We have um, a big wrench. It can be a six foot, four foot, worst case ten foot.
Eight foot, ten foot.
Okay, okay.
Curb key it's called.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm a summer Luke though. I like that idea. Well, no.
Yeah, why, I mean it's.
In southern states, they're all, in southern states, they're buried out in the yard, but they don't freeze. You would have to have a manhole. You have to be able to go down and physically remove the meter or do whatever work on the meter. So you're going to end up putting huge manholes in everybody's front yard. It's why it's not feasible. Every water meter in every city in the state of Minnesota comes up into the basement.
I mean, could we just give him that option? I'm saying, could we give him the option? Maybe he, maybe he'd rather not have that transmitter in his house. He would pay someone to go put it in at the curb stop.
That isn't what his issue was, no.
Well, I mean, he doesn't want people in his house and he's concerned about the radio frequencies and all these things. I mean, why not give people the option to have it at the curb stop? Instead, if it's battery operated, you don't need power. I don't understand. That's an option. Yeah.
I'd like to have a look at it. If, if you bury the meter and then run an antenna, stick a half inch out of the ground, you'd be able to just drive right down the road and take everybody's reading the same way.
You could, you could still.
Keep in mind with those older meters, if we need to do, if we need to do a meter history, like, well, if the house sold, we do a meter history to see what the usage was. But if we have to, we actually connect to the meter.
Okay.
I guess, I, I mean, Councilman Lundin's, I guess, on the main point is access, you know, any, any electrically connected valve that we have, anything like that, has to have a manhole to be able to get down to it to replace the batteries, replace the parts, to have access to swap it out. So yeah, I mean, you could build an entire manhole, but now you're spending eight thousand dollars messing around.
But we, couldn't we give him that option to self pay something like that if that's what he wanted? I mean, that would be.
That wasn't his issue.
Oh, I, I know, but he doesn't want people in his house.
When I mentioned, when I, I mean, because we're working on allowing wells within the city limits, right? Which you're still going to have to deal with state issues.
Right.
But I mean, that was the first option I thought of was, well, we're requiring that he's on city water. Well, we shouldn't, we shouldn't have to require that. I mean, if, if we're providing a good service, then people will choose that, right? So, uh, but I mean, the cost to put your well in is pretty substantial, right? So, so I mean, when I mentioned that to him, that wasn't really an option for him. I mean, that wasn't something he was interested in. I did, I highly doubt he's going to want to self pay for, for a meter like that. But, but I mean, that, so that, I did mention something similar to that to him. And that wasn't, wasn't something he was interested in.
So we have to pay seventy-five dollars a month? Is that what I understood to keep up that software?
No, the seventy-five dollars per month was charged to the other homeowner that we're referencing that didn't want to change his meter out at the last meter change out. That is to cover, cause as the meter gets older, you lose loss. Uh, it's not accurate. So it takes that into account, but also staff time to manually go out to read. Even if it is reading from the curb line, you have to take a different device to go read that meter. So that was at that time and council could change it. That was what the council determined was the offset for, you can keep your old meter, well, basically grandfather you, you in, but you will be charged seventy-five dollars in addition to your water bill, to your utility bill, um, to offset the extra work and burden it takes for the city to read your meter that you want to keep.
And I do agree with that because there's no reason that the rest of the city should have to burden any sort of tax cost that that is going to cost for staff to go out there and check the meter. I mean, that's not fair for everybody else that's complied with, you know, the, the basic water meter change out. So um, I think we should, we don't want to end up costing this taxpayers more money. So I think the fee is, is fair. Um, I would hope that he would just decide that he would like to get it installed, but I understand if he doesn't. Um, but I think it.
I think the best thing to do is get, let him tell him, we'll let him use this meter until it fails. And at that point, we're going to have to come in and replace it. And at that time, I'll go in and do it for him. So he doesn't feel uncomfortable with anybody else going in there. So if that meter starts giving him problems, he's going to either start paying the seventy-five dollars at that time.
Yeah.
Or he replaces the meter. I, 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 I agree with Mayor Gordon. I, I don't think we should go to the administrative, whatever you want to call it, but I just don't think we need to do that. I don't want to be that person, never want to be that person. But I think we've given him every option viable to accommodate him.
But once it starts costing the tat, the, the city staff, yeah, then they have to assess the fee. That's.
So do you, we need to make a motion on that?
So you, so you're saying, and for the time being, as long as everything's operating the way that it is now, no fee. If at the time that, you know, he has a battery run out or the radio runs out or.
He needs to replace the meter.
You're starting to do maintenance on it, then you charge the seventy-five dollars a month or he replaces the meter.
Yep. And I, and I, but I, also when I say that, we're buying time for him to cool off.
Yeah, yeah. And we're doing what we can. I mean, that's, and I agree with you, Luke. I mean, if we, if it's going to start costing us money, then it's not fair to everybody else to, to do that.
Are we able to read his meter without having to go out to his property? No?
No, we will have to go to his property, come, go to the curb line.
Then he'll have to pay seventy-five dollars.
We don't have to go into the house right now with his radio reading, but we will have to take a separate handheld device or the laptop and go to the curb line to get the radio read, transmit.
Then I guess at that point, he's going to have to start paying the seventy-five dollars.
He will be the only house, because the other two, as we mentioned, don't have water on. We're not reading them.
So you're saying, you think we, unless right away, we should start the seventy-five?
Yeah, because if we're sending a staff time to go out there and read his meter, they're sending it's time. It's valuable time.
Yeah. Well, and I think that's fair. I mean, I, I think, uh, I mean, we're doing what we can with them and I mean, I mean, Mike, Mike had told me a story about a leaky toilet, I think, was it or?
Yeah, we did a meter change out. And this is, this is the kind of the point of why, I think, at least in part, I hope. I wasn't here for this, but I hope that's why we started charging them seventy-five. Uh, we did a meter change out for water meters in Granite Falls. And we had a contracted service. Guy goes into the basement, he's getting ready to change out the meter. Homeowner's walking him down. He said, and the technician says, hey, I can clearly tell that that toilet right over there is leaking. Uh, when I put this new meter in, you're going to want to make sure you get that, get that fixed because your usage is going to go through the roof. He says, oh no, it's fine. My bill's tiny. He says, yeah, I understand, but your meter is old enough that it's not, probably not accurately measuring the water use. Well, change the meter out. We start monitoring that. We send him a letter. Hey, your usage is real high. You might want to fix that. Give him a call because I can tell this is getting exor, exorbitant. Well, his bill went from about, you know, he was like a sixty, sixty-five dollar a month kind of guy. Um, his first bill, because of that leaky toilet, his first bill after one month was over three thousand dollars.
What?
Cause the meter, cause the meter was so old and it was not collecting any flow except only the highest level of flow. So none of the water that was going through his toilet was being metered at all. And, and needless to say, he, he fixed that very, very quickly after that. So.
Expensive toilet.
That can be the only meter then that wasn't measuring water.
Oh, the, I, the stories I could tell you that maybe, we don't need to do that now, but I've got wild, wild stories from that meter change out project. So.
Mayor and council, I would like to recap, just make sure I understand correctly, but then I'll do the follow-up question about if we are not able to read it. We do need to enter the house to get the read, what the next steps will be, just to forego having to come back to council and ask. But my understanding is that effective January's billing cycle, that Mr. Devery Sorensen at thirteen Buckskin Boulevard Southeast would be charged an additional seventy-five dollar fee and permitted to keep his old meter style. At that, going forward, there would not be an end date. Um, is that correct?
Until it fails.
Well, okay. So when the radio fails, just to be clear, it's the radio and then we have the meter body. So if the radio fails, at that time, are we going to require him to hook up versus go in to do a manual read?
I, I would say, I mean, if we can keep the radios on or the parts on hand, that if, if he's, if he's willing to let us in to actually fix it and replace it. You know, that's the caveat is, is he going to let you in to do that? Well, at that time, if he doesn't, then we don't have it. As long as he's willing to let us do the maintenance on it, I would say let him continue to use the old meter.
With the fee.
Or, or do a manual read if that's what it takes.
If he's okay with that, that's fine. But I doubt he's going to want to us to come in there every month. But if he's okay with that, that's fine. As long as, and we charge the fee, then yeah, I think, I think we could go, you know, as long as we can, but um.
One thing he had brought up at committee of the whole, if I'm remembering it correctly, was for him to read it and tell us what it was. I just want to ensure that council is not okay with that as an option. I don't recommend that we do.
I mean, I think he's probably, he's probably an honest guy. And if I, if I had to say, we could, we could, we probably could trust him to do that. But it's not, that's not the way the world works, you know? I mean, that's just not.
Could we do it that way? And instead of going to his house once a month, he going once a year to make sure?
I think once he starts paying seventy-five dollars a month, he's going to want his water meter changed. It's not going to cost him ten cents.
He'll be calling Steve up saying, hey, put in that.
And as soon as you can get an okay for me to go in there and do it, I will contact him and go in and do it.
Councilman Mayor, I understand what you're saying, but I don't, I wouldn't recommend that from staff and keeping it fair and equitable across. We don't do an honor system with any of our other reads. I wouldn't rec, I wouldn't be staff's recommendation.
Yeah, and it's not that I wouldn't trust him to be honest. It's just, that's not how you do things. So.
If I could get a motion on that, that would be.
I make a motion to that. I am not going to go through all that spiel again. I think Ms. Woods knows what we're talking about.
So Steve's making a motion. We charge the seventy-five dollars a month, starting in January. And we keep the, we keep the, uh, the current meter operational for as long as possible or uh, until the time that he doesn't allow us to enter the home to read the meter manually. At that time, we'd have no other choice to go with the administrative warrant or he could choose to change the, uh, the meter out.
I'll second it.
I have a motion from Councilman Lundin and a second from Councilman Heeman. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries five zero.
And Mayor and council, just so I could add, if we do have any other residents who want to request to have a similar uh, situation for them and go back to their old meter, staff will recommend that they come before council for that determination.
Sure.
And I just wanted to say something on this water meter issue. Uh, there's been a couple of people that have asked if the, if the government can shut off your water remotely with that new meter. And the answer is no. So I just wanted to publicly answer that because that has been a question I've received more than two times, which is somewhat concerning. But I just reassure people that that's not what we're in the business to do and those meters are not capable of that, how they were installed. So.
And can we, if we have staff go out there, can we make sure that they have a vest that says City of Iscany, just to make sure that he knows clearly who we are?
Yes, we have had a discussion. They will not only have their vest that, because it does have the logo on the back, however, they will have their badge, their name badge with an ID picture as well.
All right. So next we have K eight, resolution to consider approving a special event permit for Rum River BMX's New Year's race. And I don't, Jay, do you want to come up and, or do you want to, well, you go ahead and introduce it and then Jay, if you want to come up and just kind of tell us about it? Sorry to make you wait so long. It's.
Rum River BMX has submitted a special event application to host a one day overnight event at Iscany, Iscany Indoor Arena. This is not a typical event that we request a special event permit for, but due to the hours of the event, it wasn't allowed within their lease agreement. So um, as part of the resolution, you'll see that we, we would like this to be allowed as an annual event. That being said, it's a New Year's race. That's scheduled to take place six PM on December thirty-first to seven AM or, sorry, it was eight PM. Sorry. Eight thirty PM to two thirty AM. Thank you. Um, an estimated amount of three hundred people will be in attendance. Um, restrooms will be within Iscany Indoor Arena, as well as all of the sound equipment and everything will be within the building. Um, parking will be in the lot at the indoor arena with the overflow on the northeast and southeast, south, southeast lots in Bluebird Park. All city department heads have given their approval upon the condition that the noise is contained within the park limits as stated in the lease agreement. Um, just due to the late hours. Um, that's one of the least standards. As well as Public Works Director Sylvester gave his approval with the assumption that if it snowed, the public works would plow the lot before the event, but would not be able to keep it open all night during the snow event. And staff is requesting your approval on this item.
Travis, I have a question for you quick. Um, that's a busy night for you guys. Are you all at all concerned about maybe having issues there that take you away from other issues? I know she said that it was approved by the department heads, but I just was curious about that.
No, we don't have any concerns about them getting out of control while they're riding too fast.
Well, I mean, I mean afterwards, like when people leave.
No, no, there's no wish, that, that, I mean, we, they've had national events there, you know, with thousands of people. And other than medical type runs, which that's about the extent of that. And that's on, you know, thousands of people events.
Is it, and is alcohol, is alcohol prohibited in that building? Okay. I just want to make sure you're not going to have three hundred people that could potentially be drinking and driving on New Year's. I mean, you know what I mean? It's, that's my concern.
There's, we, no, there's no concern. Like I said, we deal with it when there's three thousand people there, a national event, and there's no law enforcement that, issue that I can think of, other than medical type stuff. So.
The, the whole idea came as someone from families.
Sure.
On New Year's, um, USA BMX shuts down on December fifteenth and we're not allowed to race until January first. So there's been other tracks in the country that have gone to this type of race and have had success with it. It's been, become an annual event for them. So it was brought up at one of our association meetings by one family. They thought it would be fun to do, so. Have some families on, we're going to start dropping the gate at midnight.
Nice. I think it's a great, great thing to do. Good family event.
Do you need Jay's name and address or anything like that? Or you guys know who he is? Okay, okay.
And speaking of that. And if I could, um, just add, um, it can be in the same motion if council deemed that this might be appropriate. Why we really appreciate Jay coming, um, to all these special event permit requests. We have not had a single issue and BMX works really well with city staff. And I think that, um, staff would be for, and he can certainly come to speak on behalf to give more highlight to his events, but perhaps the council may want to consider that he doesn't have to come on every request before council. Um, I think that we do that for some of our other, like renewals. We don't do it for special event permits always per se. But that might be something that we don't want to require a representative from BMX to.
I just thought he liked to be here.
Yeah, so did I. I didn't know he was required.
I do, I think he does.
I didn't know he was required. Wow.
Maybe I should say, uh, we, we have come into an agreement with USA BMX and Gateway to the City. We will be hosting, uh, three national races over the course of the next six years. So, um, that's a huge deal that's really unprecedented. We're on track right now with only a couple of weeks left in the year to be the number one factory in the country.
So it's, it's huge. Yeah. So.
Nice. Congratulations.
Everybody in the BMX world knows Iscany, as you say, we're anything in Minnesota, oh, Rum River. Yep. So. So the whole city should, you know, be proud of what we've got here. So.
Yeah, you guys do a really, really good job there. I mean, it's, uh, I, I really had never seen it before getting into this position. And they invited me out to, to start the race for these little, I don't know, twelve months old. I mean, they're just tiny, tiny little kids and, and adults too. And I just had a blast. I mean, it was so neat to watch these kids getting into that kind of activity and, and it's a sport they can enjoy until what, what's, uh, what's the Wendy Al's name who's seven?
Ms. Kitty is seventy-eight years old and she raced, uh, seventy-eight times this year.
Yeah, that's just amazing. So, yeah, and they, you guys just do a, just an awesome job. I mean, that facility is, is kept pristine. And uh, yeah, it's been, been fun to, to get to know you guys and be involved in what's going on there. So. Yeah. Uh, did you make a motion already? Or Jay, did you want to add anything else at all? Or you made a motion? Okay.
I'll make, I'll make a separate motion. I'll make a motion to approve the event and a motion that BMX does not have to be at every council meeting in the future unless requested by staff. Or council.
Okay.
I would second that.
Okay. So I have a, a new motion from, uh, Councilman Heeman and a second from Councilman Mayor. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries five zero. Thanks for coming in. All right. Moving on to K nine, the resolution to consider approving the termination of the development and subsidy agreement with Kane Properties LLC.
Good evening again, Mayor and Council. Um, as you probably very well remember, in twenty twenty-one, Special Tools and Adam Klinkner from Kane Properties purchased the, through a. from Kane Properties purchased the, through a subsidy of purchasing the lot for one dollar, the two and a half acre parcel within Isani Centennial Complex. Due to the, a number of factors, he hasn't been able to begin construction on his building, so he's running out of time on his two-year subsidy agreement. And therefore, he will be requesting tonight. He couldn't make it tonight. His kids ended up making it to a wrestling final. And so he did apologize, but he wanted to be there for them. So, but, sorry. So this is assuming that the E D A, with their approval of selling the lot for one hundred and fifty-eight thousand, which is the approved, appraised amount, we would need to cancel the development agreement, because there won't be any other ties necessary to the city having on that parcel, other than zoning. It will remain as an industrial lot and all of those things. But if he's buying it completely for the appraised value, we didn't see the need to maintain that development agreement. So this is a termination of that agreement. It would start at the time that the finance director, Mr. Becker, has received and cleared the one hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars from the purchaser. And at that time, it would make the other agreement null and void.
Motion to approve. I'll make a second on it. Motion to approve from Councilman Lundin and a second from myself. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries five zero. So moving on to K ten, the council member business card discussion. Luke, I think, was this kind of something you were bringing up?
Yeah, so Jeff and I were talking in the hallway, and I think it was Jeff's idea to maybe have, you know, a, a business card out there with, just one single business card with all our names and all our contact information. That way, if somebody wants to reach out to one council member, all the council members, all they can do is, they just grab one card, and then they can have our information. I think it'd be a good way to, I guess, reach out to people in a cheap way. Maybe make them feel like their voice are heard more. They have our contact information on the fridge if they want to call us or email us or whatever.
Unfortunately, all our information is already on the website.
Right.
So that's, doesn't cost anybody anything. You make a business card, you got to pay for it.
People, people do come in here, though, and they.
They grab business cards.
I had to replace mine the other day, so people are coming in and taking them.
I'm just saying.
It was just an interesting idea.
It's just, it's on the website.
Yeah, no, you're right.
It costs nothing, and if you're easy enough to go on there and get it, you know, I just think you, you buy a business card, you're paying, you, you got to pay for it.
Yeah.
It's a great idea, actually.
Does, Josie, do you know roughly how many business cards get taken from the front desk a year? It can't be that many, a couple hundred maybe?
You know, I wouldn't really be able to guess. I think it depends who, I, I wouldn't, I don't know. Anna gives out when people ask, and so she gives out cards, so they can have something to take them with if, if they're not available or something. But I, I don't know, I, we give her the box, and she just refills, so I'm not.
So maybe we could ask her how many we use a year roughly? I mean, just to kind of get a gauge on it. I mean, I don't think it's going to be that money, but there might be one person that comes in that will, that doesn't use the internet. I mean, there's a bunch of people in this community that don't use the internet. Both my parents don't really use the internet. It's, there's people in the community that would reach out to us. So, I mean, if it's going to cost us ten dollars a year to have our, the business card out there with all our names on it, I think it's worth it.
I like the idea, because I've had people ask me for a card in chamber, and to give them one with everybody's number on it is even better.
Right.
Or they can contact all of us, or.
And it's the same.
I think you guys just print them at Vistaprint or something like that, with like twenty bucks for a box?
I tried with you, with yours, and we did Vistaprint. I would say the quality was not as great, because it's.
Well, hey, no, I thought it looked pretty good.
Well, I got, I got some free, because I complained, because they were off-center.
Well, you're right. They did, the first batch, the first batch was not so good.
Yeah, it was not so great. So, but, I mean, we do have the, our graphic person that does make like our letterhead on embossed paper and who we get business cards from there. The more we order, the better deal we get. But if we are just to buy five hundred, a box of five hundred from her, it's fifty-nine eighty-nine, which, then they're the best quality. They, I mean, they look very professional. So I would say that would be the highest amount.
And then also, another point is, when I'm at the L M C meetings, I personally hand out my own business card, because I don't have a city council one. And so it'd be kind of handy for any of us that go to these state meetings or anything like that. You can hand out your information in a more professional way with actual, like, all your council information on the council and mayor. I think that would be.
And I think we, I, I do think there was, there was a council member too that created their own card, but it just was on their own.
Yeah.
You can create a council member business card through Vistaprint, but just the city hasn't paid for it. The only one that the city has paid for was the mayor, but we haven't said that people couldn't create their own.
If we were to do that, could we, like, if, if one of us, say, paid to do it, could we all, could we set it out there? Does it have to be city paid for to set it out on the desk?
That's council-directed. I think that.
We can afford this fifty dollars.
Yeah, that's, I think it's worth it, but I'm just saying, if the cost is an issue.
I think it's, I think it's reasonable that, that we would have a card like that. I think it's a good idea. And I'll make the motion to, to get five hundred business cards with the entire council's information on it.
Including the mayor?
Yeah, you might as well throw that on there, too. I mean, I'll keep mine out there still, too, but, yeah.
I'll second.
So I have a motion from myself and a second from Councilman Heeman. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side. Motion carries five zero. Consent agenda, there's not much on that. Do I have a motion to approve it?
So is that correct, that there's nothing else on the consent agenda? Oh, wow, okay.
Oh, the only, the only thing I did have a question, I signed a check today, was an insurance claim on a vehicle was.